Patrick Myron, I'm in Marquette, Michigan. Have been for thirty some years. Been on the board for not quite that long, but quite a bit. And yes, was honored and thrilled to be asked. And you know, it's gone through a lot. And yeah, it's been a great experience for me and my family. My wife just went to pick up my daughter at Peter White Public Library. She has many books that she can carry up the stairs. So we'll see what the damage is when she gets home. Yeah, so welcome, Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Steve?
Oh, me?
Yep.
Hi, Steve Schmuck, I'm in Marquette. I've been here for about twenty-two years, but have deep UP roots. My mom came over from Norway to munici when she was three. And so we've been in the UP off and on, long time as Hancock resident for many years too. So just retired from Marissa after twenty-some years as technology director. And Peter White Library is always one of the places we bring visitors to the area. So we think it's a gem of the community. I'm honored to be part of the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Great. Andrea?
Andrea Emeyer, Library Director, Peter White Public Library. I've been here since 2016.
Bruce?
Bruce McDonald, I'm here at Peter White. I am the Assistant Director and Head of Technology. I've been here since 2007.
Jenny?
I'm Jenny Kelpola. I'm the Communications Coordinator at Peter White. I've been at the library since 2010. I worked in youth services. And I didn't check my husband's schedule. He's coaching the ski team, so my kids are home. But they've got a pile of books, so hopefully they won't be Zoom bombing us.
Rick?
Rick Orr, I'm the Finance Director of Peter White Public Library. I've been doing it almost eight years now. I have enjoyed my time here at the library. And so, yeah, so that's it.
Brett?
Hi, I'm Brett Hubbard. I'm the Administrative Assistant at the library. I've been here about two and a half years now.
Sam?
Hi, I'm Samantha Ashby. I'm the Head of Adult Services, and I've been at the Peter White Public Library for almost three years now.
Amanda?
I'm Amanda Pierce. I'm the Teen Services Coordinator here at the Peter White Library. I've been working at the Peter Light Library since 2014. Started in CIRC, went to kids, and now upstairs at the Teens Ask.
Great. And Tom, welcome. I don't think we've met yet. Nice to meet you. Thanks for joining us and for your service as a tech member.
So I've lived in Marquette this time since 2013. We lived here for ten years previously. Like somebody else said, we always take visitors to the library because we think it's real attraction for the community. So I'm glad to be here.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, we do have one change to the agenda. We're under Board Action Items, Letter F. The security camera policy first reviewed. That's not available yet. That's being reviewed by the library's attorney, Ann Sierneck. So we'll have to get to that next month, I think. Otherwise, are there other, any other changes or additions to the... Sorry, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
This is Patrick. I see none.
Okay. Hearing none may have a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Patrick again, so moved.
Steve, you're the only person who can second, so.
Thank goodness you're here, Steve.
I'll second.
Okay.
Good answer.
And we have to do a roll call vote. So Patrick, I'll start with you.
This is Patrick. I say yes.
Steve?
Steve, yes.
And this is Ann. I also vote yes to approve the agenda. I also, I noticed, I was watching the city commission meeting. This, was it this week or maybe it was last week? Anyway, what I noticed is that we do things a little bit out of order, which is fine.
As the secretary, I've got a protest that it's perfectly in order here, isn't it?
Okay, well, what I may mean is when we have a motion to approve, traditionally, what happens is a motion gets made and then seconded, and then discussion ensues before a vote is taken. And we've always done our discussion first, which, as I said, is fine. I just wanted to bring it up in case anybody feels like... Because technically, we do not have to follow Robert's rules because we are a board of only five people. I forget what the number is where you have to start following that, but we, they don't, it doesn't apply to us. However, it's not a bad practice to follow. But I don't know if Patrick or Steve have any thoughts about either of those, about that? About having motions made and then seconded and then having discussion?
You know, I think we might have done that at some point, maybe by accident or coincidence. I don't know. I, it really, yeah, it doesn't really matter to me if it would be better if we followed that practice. Sure. You just have to remind me a couple of times, that's all.
Right, right. I don't have strong feelings about it. I just realized that we weren't, we're doing things in a slightly non-traditional way, and I didn't want to make anybody uncomfortable with that. So I don't know, Steve, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Like we talked about, I've been in a couple of boards also, like probably most of us have it. It keeps, if someone, if one, only one person has a burning issue and there's no support for it, taking a board time, that's where it serves a purpose. If it doesn't get a second, it doesn't even get on the agenda, so.
Right. Okay. Well, let's do that then, much sooner.
Starting now.
Item, which is to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. We are in a pickle here because we don't have a quorum to vote.
To vote on that, no, no, we do not.
All right.
Can we table that and come back?
Yeah, let's table that, come back when we have a quorum for...
Andrew's here. Does that answer for him?
I'm sorry?
Andrew is here now.
Oh, hi, Andrew.
Oh, hi.
Well, there you are.
I'm sorry, I don't have, there you are. I can't figure out how to stop getting Andrea's, stop sharing Andrea's screen for me, but that's okay. Ah, thank you.
Wow.
Asking you shall receive.
I thought I could do just me.
I gotta tell you, I was a little smaller.
Hi, Andrew, welcome. Do you want to do a quick introduction? Or you and Steve already know each other, don't you?
We do.
Okay, if you're okay with that, then we're going to keep moving because I need to be done by ten to seven tonight.
Okay.
But what you just, I don't know if you heard me talk about, we're going to have a small change in how, a small procedural change. When we have motions, we're going to have a motion made, have it, find out if there's a second, and then have discussion.
Okay.
Rather than, in the past, we've had discussion first and then made a motion. So we're just going to follow a more traditional path from now on. So if you or Patrick could make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, that would be lovely.
This is Patrick, so moved.
Andrew's second. Oh, I did have one thing about the minutes. Um, so in the... Under new business, I thought it was Patrick who made the report that, about the survey. Patrick, am I mistaken?
It's all the way toward the end.
The support of the survey?
Yeah, yeah, under new business, reported that the survey feedback he's heard is praised for curbside delivery, take-home kits, and virtual programming. I thought that was your comment.
No, I thought that was you, Andrew.
Oh, okay, well.
Yeah, it makes way too much sense to be me, so it's got to be you.
Okay, all right, great. I just didn't want to steal somebody's comment, so I'm good, second.
Okay. I'll do a roll call vote. Andrew, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patrick, how do you vote?
Aye.
This is Ann. I also vote aye. Steve, you're not eligible to vote on this one, so. Okay. Next up, we have a special presentation from Jenny. Hi, Jenny. Hi.
There we go.
So I would like to take us to the website if I could. So I'm going to share my screen. And started our events calendar. So again, I'm the Communications Coordinator at the library, and we had an exciting change in the last month. We've transitioned from the Plymouth Rocket Events Calendar to a new system called LibCal. And so when you click on the Events page, you get a whole month at a time. And it's all color quoted.
Nice.
For the different age groups. So all the tan is adults, the green is teen, the, I'm sorry, that green, that's blue. Those are really close. Going to show you something else in a minute, though, and you'll be able to see the difference. And then the yellow is little kids, so the blue is elementary. And then we do have a family color, this children's concert. It shows a month at a time. So we have February, January 31st year because February 1st started, oh, I'm sorry, because it'll show January if the first day of the month lands in the week, is how it goes. And then we decided to take away past events so that people could just scroll down and see today. They can toggle, let's see, over to the next month and see everything. Now, when you hover over something like this, it's kind of like a Google Calendar, which is really nice because a lot of people are used to that. And so they can see these different categories. So this is, the audience is youth and a storytime audience, which is zero to five. And then the category for this is storytime. So if you had decided, are there other storytimes? Like we get asked this a lot at the library. You can go up to the category tab and look for all the storytimes, and then it's going to show them all to you.
Nice.
Which is really neat. So if you, for example, want, yeah, right? If you want to know all the concerts in March, you can do that. We don't have any yet because we don't have March in yet. We're working on it. So once we get up and running and doing in-person programming again, book clubs will be here. Tasty Reads is on here now for March. We've got some genealogy programs that would come up. The lock-in is still happening virtually. You can see all the categories here, including summer reading. There's also a sort by audience. So if you only want things for seniors, it'll take you to the calendar at a month glance just for that. So we're able to filter it all the way down, just like, well, in Google with qualifiers. Or you can see everything at once. Some people want to know everything that's going on. So it's really exciting because we've always wanted to be able to do this so that people can know what's happening. It's a lot greener than printing out paper. And it's all at a month glance. A lot, we've gotten a lot of requests to make that happen instead of the week view. You can switch to week view if you prefer that. And it will show you, let's see, it's this week, yeah. Showing me the two events that are happening this week that are for seniors because I'm still on that. I guess I want to go back to all ages. And then we're going to go back to the calendar. So we're working on the room booking end of things. This is only events that are Peter White events. As you know, we do book out all those spaces, and our old system also did that. This system will do that. We'll have a special calendar that we'll use as well, and we're working on that. It's also just so nice because everything's so functional and interconnected. Andrea and Sarah Reborg and I have been working hard to get it all together, and it's pretty intuitive. We've really enjoyed working with this company. There's a lot of possibility and potential here, including, so, he's playing with the swimming pool. Including on the YS page, I was able to make a custom calendar that's just youth events. So if you're on the youth calendar, I'm sorry, on the youth page, you come to our website, you go to Youth Services, you see just youth events. And then we were also able to make a special calendar for the winter reading program so that you can register every single day because we have an online registration open. This new calendar lets us do registration for programs all online. So Sarah's been setting it up for her chapter book club, things that we need to limit for Zoom audiences because they get too big if you have too many kids. So there's a lot of potential there as well. It's just making it a lot easier for us to track everything and make sure the people who want to get here don't get lost in the shuffle. You know, when you write it on pieces of paper, or different people take those phone messages. So I went over the categories, descriptions, the audiences. I also have on the teen zone, programs just for teens on the teen page. So I think I showed you one other really neat feature. In the past, our website has had a book clubs page. You know, if people are Googling Peter White and book clubs, they might want to come and see everything that we have. If you're into that, that's what you're looking for. You might be interested in them all. So there's a way. Once you're in a single event like this, storytime event. I feel like, Andrea, I can't remember how we got there all of a sudden.
You click on one of the tags. So you can click on the category for storytime.
That's what it is. There we go. And so it's creating an entire page for me. Thank you. Of the storytimes. We kind of looked at that before, but it'd be really nice so I can just go now to... Book clubs is only going to be one. This looks so much, I don't know, user, it looks more user-friendly. I would say that it is. I think before it was really difficult. It almost looked like you were looking at, I don't know, stuff from thirty years ago as far as usability for understanding it. We did have a lot of confusion when people were trying to book their own rooms. So I think this will be a very similar interface to what you see when you book rooms as well. And, yeah, it's just cleaner to look at. That's a really nice, it's an individual month view where you can at a glance go, there's, there's three adult programs today. And you can, you can go into that program and see who to contact, and then there are some other things if you're still interested in February. Yeah, we're thrilled. Everybody's just, all the staff is very happy. This is a good change.
Looks really good.
And I think the price is pretty comparable, just a tiny bit more than what we paid before with great customer service. I've already sent them a couple of messages and got responses. We struggled with our last company to get customer service.
Well, that's worth a lot right there. I mean, it is. Because you need things to work, and they can't get any help to get it to, you know, to resolve your issues, then it frustrates everyone. Everybody needs to be frustrated.
Yeah. We're still, I mean, you can't anticipate everything because the calendars don't function the same. They each have different ways that they work. So we're still ironing things out because we're not doing in-person programming. So once that gets started, then we'll probably see some things we need to tweak. The other thing I wanted to show you is it still pulls, we have an RSS feed pulling from that calendar. So on the homepage, there's always upcoming events. And it just cycles itself, so that's still there. Yeah. Any questions?
Jenny, do you know if the marquette365.com calendar is still functional?
Andrea can probably speak to that a little. So the Market Arts and Culture Center took that over from the, her name is escaping me.
From the downtown library?
Thank you. And so Tina Harris is working on that, if I'm correct, with her staff. And they were talking about a relaunch. I don't know when that's going to be.
Okay. In March, I think is their target. It's, it's getting a whole new name and, and look, it's called the Compass now, I believe, the Marquette Compass. And I'm pretty sure Tina told me it was going to go out in March, but they've been working really hard on it. They're adding an artist resources, so it's not just events. It's also a guide to artists in the area and contact information. And they're adding a lot of content, which I think will be really nice.
Okay.
So Jennifer, this is Andrew.
Yeah, hi.
And hi. I think that the calendar with the one-month screenshot is really awesome. I'm super glad to hear that the support is there for you guys. And I'm also observing that until you showed me how to do some of the things that you just did, looking at it, I might not have figured that out. And I'm wondering if we want to have like a little video or, or, you know, a calendar, you know, do one, do two, do sub-three, that people who want to understand the calendar and know a little more about it can click on to find out.
That's a great idea. Yeah, I can definitely do that. We can add that to our FAQ page because we have one of those.
Kind of like a tutorial or something, just a quick start guide, like, hey, just walk through, a real quick walkthrough screenshot, whatever, like you just did for us.
Right, yeah, that's a great idea.
To look at it again, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be great, a little navigational video that we could load. We do have a Peter White YouTube channel where we put some videos so I could put it there. And then we could probably either put it on this page or put it on a news post so that when you show up to the website, it would be here. You know, new calendar, how to navigate. Yeah, that's a great idea, thanks.
I like it. I love it, actually.
Yeah, it's really, it's so much nicer for me to work with, so I'm very happy. It's a lot, it's more responsive and the last one, you really almost needed a degree in IT to navigate, which I don't have, so. Nice. Yeah.
That's good. Yeah, it looks really good. I'm very happy. I'm glad that it's easier for you as well. That's worth a lot, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Comment and a question, I love that it renders, so I just picked up my phone and looked at it. And it does render really well in a mobile device, too. That's fantastic.
Yeah, I was, that was going to be one of my questions was, you know, how does it look on something different than this? But obviously, you've optimized it, right? That's, yes, but.
And then the other question was, do, do calendar events, if someone searched by keyword in the regular library search box, the webpage search box, does it also search the calendar events? So would it pull up, you know, the homes, if you put in, would it pull up the Inola Homes calendar event if you typed in Inola in the search box?
It should. That is one thing we have not tested yet. If it doesn't, I will talk to our, I will talk to our IT person because we have tags that are assigned in that calendar. So I'll ask her how she pulls that over. Because the calendar, we want it, we don't want to send them to, this is tech speaking, we don't want to send them to LibCal. We want them to stay on our, on our website so they can navigate within us. So we pull that special. So I'll ask her if it's possible. I think it is. Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Are there other questions or comments for Jenny? Thanks very much.
Big thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you very much, Jenny. This, this was great.
Thank you, and thanks to Andrea. She set up a lot of the bones, and we, we got through it pretty quickly. So I, again, this is just so, so great to change, so.
Good.
Thank you, and I think I have to go feed him dinner, so I'll probably be listening.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comment. Oh, Carol's there. Hi, Carol. She's muted, but I see she is live.
Hello. I had an electrical problem here in the house, so.
Oh, no.
It's okay now.
Good, good. All right, well, we're at public comment at this point. Or did you have been, well, Jenny, Jenny's gone. But if you have questions for her about the new calendar, you can, I'm sure you could call her and ask her.
Okay.
Yeah, public comment. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. There's another chance at public comment later in the agenda if I don't skip it like I did last month. I'll try not to do that. But now we have a township advisory council report from Tom Bronken. Hi, Tom.
Hello.
Hi, Tom. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. So my role is going to be a sort of a liaison between Peter White Public Library, especially the board, and the Township, Marquette Township Board. I plan to attend the meetings of both, at least as often as I can, and report back to each, anything that would affect the other. So I won't always be the tack representative, but if something needs to be communicated to you, I'll make sure whoever is the tack rep for your meeting will know what that is. And I'm also going to try to attend as many township meetings as I can. They meet twice monthly, and they want to report from me once a month. So they meet on Tuesdays as well. In fact, they meet tonight. So on the first Tuesday of the month, I will report to the, to the Marquette Township Board. As I mentioned before, I've always thought Peter White Public Library was a great library, and I've been involved in it mostly when the village pops up and the township gets involved in that discussion. Less so in the last couple of times than it has been in previously. And there have been issues, I know, between the township and the library over the years, but it's, I think, definitely improving. One of the things that they mentioned, I know in past meetings, is that they didn't know about things that could affect them in a really timely fashion, and so they weren't able to provide any input. So anything we can do to correct that would be appreciated. Now, my being at your meetings will probably help with that. But I know that they, one of the things they said was they can't see the minutes until, actually, it turns out it's six weeks after your meeting, generally. So they've, I know they've complained about that in the past. The other thing that I've noticed when I've been at the meetings of the township is they don't really understand the services that the library offers. Now, I think a lot of this has improved. Andrea and Lynn Durant, who's the Township Supervisor, they seem to have formed a really productive relationship. Lynn is very interested in me being active. Lynn is very interested in me being active in coming back to the board with reports. So she's been, she's really pushing the liaison idea. So again, I'll report to the township board once a monthly, once monthly. You might let me know as soon as you can, anything that might impact that Marquette Township. Rather than having them wait for the minutes. And I'm planning on a regular basis to give them a short idea of what services the library offers. At the last meeting, I talked a little bit about you services based on the report that was in the packet. And I can probably talk about the calendar at this next meeting. So that's my report for the night. Anybody got questions for me?
Tom, this is Andrew. I want to thank you for that really in-depth report and all the time that you're volunteering to. To bring the library and the township together. I'm hearing that, you know, there's a concern about minutes. And I'm wondering, maybe Andrea or Brett, you would know the answers. But I'm wondering, maybe we could just send the minutes out the day after the meeting, mail a copy to each township or email a copy? Would that be?
Yeah, they're not official yet, but if you put draft on them, I think that they usually don't change too much, do they?
Well, Tom has the secretary.
I'm wondering if we could post them unapproved to our website and just send out notice that they've been posted.
No, that's a very simple, yeah, absolutely. And again, they're not officially approved until the next meeting, but between Brett and I and then whomever. You know, we review them to make sure that my score matches that score and then they're sort of good to go and they sit for a month. You're right. So I never really thought about that.
Yeah, typically, as soon as I'm done with the minutes, I send them to Patrick and just ask if he could review them. He lets me know if he sees any changes. And then, like he said, they just sit till the meeting. So I do think that would be doable to put draft on them and get them out.
That's a great idea. I like that.
Okay, well, just let me know what you finalize, what you're going to do before the meeting in two weeks and I'll report to them about what that is. Thanks.
Actually, that's a good idea for all the townships. We could inform them that we're making that change.
Tom, this is Andrew once more. So I know when we were dealing with some of the other townships, there was a desire for more outreach. And we talked about the minutes. Do you have any ideas of or thoughts on what kind of outreach the library could do?
Not at this point. I don't, I will bring that up, though, and ask them if they have ideas on that. Again, I have been sort of soliciting ideas. I've been at the last two meetings. And they, there hasn't been a lot forthcoming. Lynn is, though, really communicative, so I think maybe I'll ask her to. And I'm sure Andrea, you're probably meeting with her on a regular basis. So if they have some ideas.
Yeah, and Tom, she has been very hands-on at our meetings previous to her. Sort of joining the township board and whatever. And so, yeah, she's very familiar with the inner workings and through the expansion and. All that stuff. She knows the nuts and bolts of all of it, so.
Thank you, Tom. Are there other questions or comments for Tom?
Just another big thank you, Tom, for taking that initiative.
Yeah, another meeting.
I was going to say, it sounds like you don't have much room for fun in a month. You're all just packed up with these. But that's great. Yeah, thank you so much, Tom. Very much appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Okay, moving on to financial reports. Hi, Rick.
Hello, Ann. So I guess my first question, so are you going to actually have this approved? So following your, yeah, so basically we have to flip this format is what I'm hearing.
Format, yeah. So what we could do is have a motion to approve the bills and a second. And then have our discussion and then the vote.
Andrew, I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Just Carol, I'll second it.
Okay, and now we'll have our discussion.
And as I always start out, if there's any specific area of either the financial reports or mine. Notes that the board wants me to address, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Rick, this is Andrew. And so I saw that there were some diminished funds mainly from the townships. And the city of Marquette taxes that seem to be driving. The need to supplement with the fund balance. If, is my understanding right? Then I have another question after that.
Yeah, so you're partially correct. So the township is strictly a timing issue. If you remember, last month, our collections actually were ahead. But in comparing them to the previous year now, with the January activity, they actually have fallen behind. So that's completely a timing issue. Yeah, so what we're anticipating and what we budgeted was pretty much flat tax. Township tax revenue for this year. And that's because there is a couple of. Tax tribunals out there, Meyers and then also Walmart. So, so we felt we wanted to be conservative in that area. So it's actually budgeted. But that's strictly a timing issue. And to give you an example, in today's deposit was the first half of Marquette Township's. Payment. And so that's a huge chunk of money. So, so we could have just completely flipped it again with that. It's just how it comes in. It never comes in exactly on the same dates every year. Sands this year is way ahead. Chocley has fallen a little bit behind their pattern of payments, so. And I don't get concerned about it until, you know, later in the spring, actually, so. So because that's just when they can get to it. And with, with the COVID situation. Staffings are, you know, really different and how they're getting to the work is different than past years. So, so no concern in that area. The city of Marquette, that definitely is a reduced tax revenue for this year. And as I say, it'll, right now it's showing thirty thousand. Most of it's come in. Except for what will happen in July, which is the new tax year and we get. Roughly a quarter of that that comes on at that point. And that will be slightly down from the previous year also. So, so we're probably looking at somewhere forty-five thousand dollars less in city tax revenue for this current fiscal year. So, good question.
So, Rick, I'm hearing no real concerns with the township of the timing issue. It's still money, the money still arrives, it's just when does it arrive?
Exactly, exactly. And we might have more than what we budgeted if those tax tribunals. Aren't honored or they come in at a significantly low amount of adjustment there, so.
Okay, but with the city, we're looking at a loss of revenue. And I'm just wondering, is this going to be a loss? And I know you can't forecast it because of COVID, but if this is a repeated loss. Are we going to have to continually, well, you know, rely on the fund balance to supplement this? Or is this something that we can adapt the budget to without the fund balance?
Another great question in that, so it's ongoing because it's tied to. The final adjustment to the We Energy Power Plant. And then there was some additional reductions in. The Duke, the old Duke Life Point campus. So that has been adjusted down further and it could continue to be adjusted down every year, too. But I know that there was some settlement between the city and Duke Life Point for adjusting that. That amount. They didn't share what the assessed value is or anything like that. They just mentioned that there was an adjustment here. So, so now one of the things that you will kind of offset that, if we don't have any more major adjustments like that. Is the residential property will continue to grow. And that if we don't have any more offsets, you'll see for next year some potential increase. Just on the residential side of things increasing in value. But how much that is, I, again, this, it's a little hard for me to answer some of these questions because the city is the one with all these numbers. And I might try and get some more details from the city assessor for March. I'm thinking I can try and reach out to him and have some answers for you on what he's projecting for the assessed value for. For the city going forward, so.
Rick, and just tell me if, so I'm hearing something and I'm wondering if I'm hearing it correctly. I'm hearing that your ability to make the kind of forecast that you would like to make, you need more information from the city.
It would be helpful. So we get some numbers, but we don't really know exactly what's behind it. And so I'm kind of speculating a little bit that we could have additional reductions on the part of Duke Life Point. I feel like the residential assessed value will grow just because. It's value has increased, but I don't know exactly. I'll have a better feel once the assessment change notices come out here. And I believe later this month or the first of March. And that gives me a statewide percentage of how much value has increased. So that can be built in and then, but then if there's sales, that adjusts that figure slightly, so. So there's some ways I can come up with some creative. Logical answers, but they're not as precise as I ideally like, yes.
Yeah, and I know you, you have, you have a long track record of really nailing the numbers and being very precise. Would it help if I had, say, a city commissioner call you and see if you needed, see if. What could be done to get that information? Or is that information you feel like, oh, I can track it down without any extras?
I think, let me see what I can get by sending an email out to this city assessor. And see how willing he is to work with, with giving me some ideas of what he's projecting out for the assessed value. And if that goes nowhere, then we'll go to Plan B, I guess.
All right, and just send me a text. Andrea has my number and I'll reach out. And see what, you know, trees I can shake for you.
Appreciate that, Andrew. So, you know, but a couple of, couple of things in my little financial comments that is one of the keys is. I always feel good when I'm looking at each month and our cash position is better than it was last year. So that's, that's the first thing that gives me a real peace of mind that we're still in good shape. So when I see that trending significantly different than that, that sends out some red flags for me. You know, and then we already talked about that, yeah, the township revenue has just kind of flipped this month and that's a timing issue. But the interesting thing in this bore out when we did our amended budget is that we actually have. Reduced revenue versus last year, but the expenses actually have been reduced so far this year. By a little bit more than that, which, which kind of is what I was feeling was going on last year. Now I've really dug into the numbers and it truly is. Yes, our revenue is down, but also our expenses and almost exact equalization are down, too. So, so that, that gives me pretty good feel that we're still in a good position, so financially. And, you know, if we can, right now, in our amended budget, we didn't. Take into consideration how much our wages are under budget because we do think at some point. We're going to be back to normal hours. We're going to be back to normal staffing. And then we could actually see that be slightly higher than what we budgeted in at this point. So we could eat some of that up, but if that doesn't, doesn't happen, there's a potential that we won't have to use fund balance. Like we built into the budget, budget this year, so. So I think that unless there's some other. Other questions for me, I guess I will give you a little update. So we do now have a handle on Air Handler one. John's worked very diligently on this, working with ACC. And so the controls got adjusted, so we weren't losing. Heating or operations of Air Handler one. I think that happened on Thursday. And then we do have an actuator that's gone out on, on the heat valve again, just like we had on. On Air Handler two. And so that will be replaced here, I believe, sometime this week. So, so we should have a completely functioning Air Handler one back and tech service and John's area. Some of the other lower areas, but the far end of that, what Air Handler one services was really struggling during. During the cold. And it doesn't, doesn't hurt that the weather's now gotten at least a little more reasonably in the temperature range. So, so that's helped out, yeah. So, so everyone's happy now again. And again, I commend the work John did and making that happen, so. So I was just kind of. His go-to person for bouncing ideas off of and, but he did all the legwork on that, which was great. And more importantly, was in here babysitting the library at some extreme times, so. So Andrea might comment on that, yeah. So he was in here almost one whole night, just kind of watching. Watching to make sure that, yeah. I think that was, yeah, Thursday night into Friday morning. Because that's when we thought we had the control system figured out, but he wanted to be, have an ease of mind that it was figured out.
To experience it firsthand.
Yeah, because we had, we had a, we had a, one of the. Heads of the water sprinkler system go to in that area. So that's how cold that area got. So, yeah, so, so he was concerned that, yeah, something else could go that. So he hung out a good part of Thursday night and Friday morning here, so. So anyways, I know, unless there's some other questions, I'll, but that's it for myself, so.
There are other questions or comments for Rick?
Rick, this is Andrew. I just want to say thank you and the big thanks to John for going that extra distance. The. And also thanks to the staff for putting up with that level of cold. That's not easy.
Yeah, they were, they were pretty resilient in dealing with it. Yeah, it was about fifty degrees and even, because it, we struggled to try and get it, get it to heat up even once we got the system back on.
Yeah, it's not warm. You're sitting, basically sitting still.
Yeah, but our lead had a space heater and Dawn has an internal body heat, I think. She was, she was saying, well, this is perfect.
Rick, if I can follow up with one more thing. I know I brought this up a few months back. But I kind of saw a little note that you might be retiring, you know, sometime this year. And you have so much insight into the budget and into the physical plant. And I know you're passing that on to John, but maybe if there's a way you could, your insights can be recorded somehow. So that, you know, future staff. You know, future staff can can access that knowledge without having to always call you up or text you.
Yeah, I think that's that's being addressed, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm handing a lot of that information off to John, so yeah, very quickly, he'll be completely up to speed on the. On on the building operational side of things, uh. And my hope is that it'll actually be a period of time transition, so I'll have some time to. To work with whoever comes in in my my capacity, so.
Okay.
So I'm not just gonna one day be there and the next day out, so it'll be kind of a transition is what we're gonna try and. Orchestrated, and then the timing of it is really at the based on this uh. On the COVID virus, so right now, there's not a lot of incentive, because you can't really do a lot of things, so. So.
You may as well stay and work.
Yeah, that's kind of fun, yeah, I was gonna do it in in October, and it's like. Well, what am I gonna do, just sit at home with my mask on or whatever? So, yeah, and and now it's like, I'm thinking. Hopefully by summer is is kind of what what I'm targeting, so.
Well, I think, yeah, having some overlap would be the ideal transition, so hopefully we can, that can happen.
Hmm.
That would be great, thank you, Rick.
Yeah, thanks for all your hard work.
Quick question, Rick, this is Steve, um I I know multi-year, especially with. Uh you know, issues varying so much, multi-year projections are always gonna be iffy, but. I'm I'm sure you're looking out, and you and Andrew are looking out. Um you know, if there's, if if something, you know, something's gonna happen next year, like something's gonna go brownfield, or something's gonna fall off the tax rolls. Is i- is that kind of being noted somewhere like? Okay, well, it looks like we're roughly gonna be about the same for a couple years, but then something's gonna fall off, you know, or. I know it's iffy, it's really iffy, but there are some things sometimes that you can see, wow, that's really gonna hit us hard. And if you see those, you you bring them to the board's attention or Andrew's attention, of course.
Right, yeah, and so that's one of the things I'm thinking about in in March. I think I can put it to, put it together and try and give, it's actually not. Maybe I'll touch a little bit on areas of concern of of revenue losses, but areas for the board to consider. Where we're gonna have some some potential for revenue gains, so.
And the city, I'm sure, is looking at those same things, uh. And so what in your communications with them, I'm sure they'll say, heads up to people who depend on city funding. There might be a rough patch three years out because of blank, you know.
Right, right.
Thanks.
And and Steve, if if you ever want to dig into the numbers, I don't know how much of a numbers person you are. Um my door is always open, so if you wanna go through the balance sheet and the. Expense and revenue statements and get a clearer understanding of of exactly. What that format shows, uh represents, I I'd be happy to share that with you.
I appreciate that, I do like numbers, I, when I balance things on my own, if I'm a penny off, I'll spend all night figuring it out.
Sounds good. Other questions or comments about the. This month's finances or the bills? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna do, uh Carol, for your benefit, we've we've. This month, we've changed things up a little bit, we are, when we have something to vote on. We're having the motion and the second first and then discussion and then a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we're gonna go ahead and have a vote to approve the bills, and I'm gonna do an alphabetical by first name roll call vote. So Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Patrick, how do you vote?
Hi.
Steve, how do you vote?
Hi.
This is Ann, I also vote aye. Motion passes five zero. So next up. Thank you, Rick.
I'm muted, you're welcome.
Uh next, we have the approval of the. Um library establishment and authority policy, we had the first reading last month. So what I'd like to do is have a motion and a second, and then we'll have it, it's see if there's any discussion.
I'll make the motion, this is Carol. The Board of Trustees of the Peter White Public Library moves to approve the library establishment and authority policy as presented. This policy becomes effective February sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
This is Patrick, I'll second.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Or questions?
I did make one change from what you read at the last meeting. Um in the footnote at the bottom of the policy, there was um reference to a district library financing act. And we're not a district library, so I did strike that from the policy.
Thank you.
Seems really straightforward.
Yeah. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and do a a roll call vote, Steve and I talked about this, uh Steve, I recommend you abstain. Since you weren't here for the first reading, so Andrew, how do you vote?
Aye.
Carol, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patrick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steve?
Abstain.
And this is Ann, I also vote aye, motion passes. Four yeses and one abstention. All right, next we have the philosophical principles policy. May I have a motion?
Andrew, I can make a motion. The Board of Trustees of the Peter White Public Library moves to approve the philosophical principles policy as presented. This policy becomes effective February sixteen, twenty twenty one.
Second, this is Carol.
Thank you. Andrea, did we, I'm trying to look at it.
Yeah, I I did make a few tweaks based on the comments of last um last meeting, and we had. Talked a little bit about, um Andrew brought up some some um discussion about some word, some verbiage. That should be more inclusive, um and also address some other topics that have been a focus of the board over the last several years, so. I did um change the the one note that just had diversity and put in the ALA language of e- equity, diversity and inclusion. Um and then included the ALA statements on equity include um diversity and inclusion. They don't have one set policy, but they have several statements that address um a lot of different topics related to. Equity, diversity and inclusion, so I thought we would just note that. Um Andrew had also brought up the um outreach and health. And those are really all contained within the ALA documents, so I didn't know that we need note. I didn't think that we needed to call each of those out, because they are included in the the ALA policies. Um and to to a point that I feel like it's pretty well detailed out. So those are the changes that I made, I did also include in the board packet. Um a copy of the ALA Code of Ethics and the Bill of Rights, so I hope everyone had a chance to read through those.
Are there questions or comments about the philosophical principles policy? Okay, hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote, and again, now Steve, I'll ask you to abstain. Andrew, how do you vote?
Aye.
Carol, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patrick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And this is Ann, I also vote aye. So that passes with four yeses and one abstention. Next, we have the holiday observances. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, the Board of Trustees of the Peter White Public Library moves to approve the holiday observances policy as presented. This policy becomes effective February sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
Uh this is Patrick, I'll second.
And I s- I Andrea, I saw you changed the. Easter to spring holiday and the December holidays to winter holidays, I like that change, I think that's good.
I did uh speak with Amanda too, um and. Just to make sure that she didn't see anything that might come up as far as a union issue, and came to my office today and was like. So did you talk to the union about the change in the the wording, and I was like, no, I didn't. Um so I did talk with her just to make sure she didn't see anything that she thought would be contradictory, it doesn't actually. Um impact the the union contract at all, the board does have the right to set the dates. So, and we we do that every every year in October for the upcoming year, so I don't think it'll be an issue. Um it is just wording, and probably what will happen, my guess is what will happen, is that this will carry over to the union contract. The next negotiation. Um I know Sam and Amanda have also talked to the union membership about the issue of Martin Luther King. Um versus Presidents' Day, that is something that came up from our staff this this last year, that they. Um there was some interest in in putting the holiday on Martin Luther King Day as opposed to Presidents' Day. So I think the membership does have a vote out for that right now, is that right, Sam?
I think we're gonna talk about it for the next contract, or doing some sort of letter of agreement to switch it for next year.
Okay.
Oh, the date and the title, then, okay.
Yep, so probably for October, um when we. If the membership decides that they would like to look that, look at that for twenty twenty two's schedule, then we'll be revisiting this policy in October. Um if the if it changes me, you know, a change is warranted um within the membership. So that might be us revisiting this policy in a a shorter period of time, um but that's that's fine.
Right, yeah, I mean, this is a, I mean, this is an important policy, but it's not a. Yeah, we can, we can revisit it as we need to.
Absolutely.
This is Carol, I have a question. I understand the winter holiday language, and I think it will be clear what those two dates are, but I'm not sure I understand. The spring holiday, um if we ever had Sundays back, are we saying both Good Friday and Easter Sunday?
Right, I, in some ways, I kind of like this this wording being a little bit more vague, because um because if we do get Sunday back. We are able to in October of the the year. Five or two, the year it's effective, we can set those dates, uh the board can set those actual closing dates. So if we're saying spring holiday, um we are obligated by our union contract to give one closed day around Easter. Typically, it has been on Sunday, um however, uh that was during a time when we were open on Sundays. So when we stopped being open on Sundays, it got shifted, um actually, it was a floating holiday for a while, and that was problematic. So then we shifted it to an actual day of the week, um so that people could have a day off. So I think what the, really the the nice thing about having this wording a little bit vague, is it does leave that door open to if we. Are at a point where we feel like we can have Sunday hours again, then the board has the authority to set that schedule. Um when we set the actual closing dates.
Now, another question, does the city itself use this same language?
I don't believe so.
Had somebody raised an issue of the connection with religious days, so to speak?
We talked about it at the last meeting.
Ah, okay, and I missed that, all right, that's fine.
Yep.
Thank you.
And Carol, this is Andrew, one of the things I observed when we were discussing the previous policy is that. We're working on diversity, um and I also was thinking in my mind, we have a synagogue that's a block away from the library. If we attack, you know, we're how, and and you'll ex- you know, exercising that diversity. Was Easter really the most appropriate language? And that's the issue that I I I raised, but I I I just brought, raised it as an item of discussion.
Okay, I appreciate that, I also think that there is more recognition currently. Of Martin Luther King Day than there is Presidents' Day, for example, NMU. Does not even start till the day after Martin Luther King Junior Day now, and Presidents' Day, they totally ignore. And Presidents' Day, to me, doesn't seem to be getting much play anymore, but anyway. Um I understand the unions uh need to talk about that, but I personally hope it goes that way. Because I think if we are closed on Martin Luther King Junior Day, that's a statement in and of itself.
Yeah, that's definitely the feedback that we had from staff, uh some staff. Um about not closing on Martin Luther King, um by being open on that day, it also sends a statement. And perhaps it's not a statement that we really want to send.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Yeah. Other questions or comments about the holiday observances?
Well, Andrew, thank you for for raising this, bringing this up.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Well, and it's, you know, I mean. Inclusion is is a huge part of this too, and I don't know who may be offended by what. Um let's just try to. Make it so they'd have to be really clever to have a.
Yep. All right, let's have a vote on approving the holiday observances. I'll do a roll call vote, Andrew.
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Steve?
Abstain.
This is Ann, I also vote aye. Motion passes with four yeses and one abstention. The last policy approval for tonight is the Board Member Conflict of Interest Policy. May I please have a motion?
I'll make a motion, the Board of Trustees of the Peter White Public Library moves to approve the Board Member Conflict of Interest Policy as presented. This policy becomes effective February sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
This is Andrew, I'll second.
So I have, the question I have about this is. Um how and when would our current board membership? Sign it, I guess we just need to stop into the library, wouldn't we? Okay.
So I did add wording to address the topic that we um talked about last meeting, which is if we have um multiple members of the board. Who feel they have a conflict of interest and do not um do not wish to vote. But that would actually keep us from being able to vote and move forward on an issue. Um that we would go ahead and move forward with the vote, just noting the fact that there are conflicts of interest um amongst us.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I am too, I think that's exactly what we were trying to get at, so thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, it is sticky, you know, especially as with the five-person board, you know, we can't really. Have very many people have, you know, abstain or or not vote or whatever, so. But yes, I think awareness is the, and transparency, awareness and transparency are the goals.
Exactly.
So. Are there other questions or comments about the conflict of interest policy?
This is Steve, I I had a question, um I just brought it up, because we, I think, well, the last place I was at, there was a whole.
Oh, Steve, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I was looking, I was flipping back to my own copy of um the regulations. Uh that first regulations, number one, where it talks about doing disruptive behavior um. On or off the job trustees, I I I'm just wondering, is there any? I'm not, I'm not saying this for myself, because I'm not on Facebook and I don't make posts, but. I know at our last job, we had a whole section in policies about. Social media behavior and posting kind of, anyway, I just bring it up, because that could be just. It might be about a totally different topic, but if someone's a trustee and. And being, has a super high hot profile because they're posting disruptive things about a whole different topic, I just wonder if that. At some point should be looked at too, or commented on in policy, that sort of thing.
Good question.
That is a good question. Um and I don't know, I'd have, I'd really need to speak with our attorney about that, I think. Because I'm not sure um where social media, there's, it gets very tricky, it's very different with an employee relationship. Um but even then, there's so much that an employer can and cannot say that a employee can do on social media. Um so it it's just a, it's a tricky issue. So it's just a, it's a tricky issue, but I will ask.
It's just something that, yeah, I appreciate that, Andrea. It's just something to ask about before it ever becomes an issue, if it ever does or ever would, but nice to know in advance. Again, I'm I'm not asking for myself because. Stay clear, but anyway.
Yeah, no, it's a very good question. Yeah, and I think we can go ahead and pass this policy as it stands. And then we can revise it if if necessary, if we think we need to make any additions or changes to it. If that's agreeable with everyone. Okay, are there other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a vote on whether to pass the Board Member Conflict of Interest Policy. Andrew, how do you vote?
Aye.
Carol, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patrick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steve, how do you vote?
Abstain.
This is Ann. I also vote aye. Motion passes with four yeses and one abstention. So now we have a meeting, the meeting room policy, which is not a motion to vote on. We're just reading it for the first time and having discussion.
And I did, I did talk with Chris over at the Regional History Museum just to kind of let her know what was in this this draft and kind of get a feel for how that would impact the Regional History Museum. And her response was that she didn't think it would impact them a whole lot because we are looking at doing ceremony only and not any kind of reception. And their package does include receptions. So that's that's the one issue in this policy where I'm still kind of like, do we want to, do we want to really dip our whole foot into this water or or not? We have had a couple weddings in the library over the years and it's, we get a lot of, why was, I don't know if I would say a lot. But we do get requests, and I'm never sure how to respond to the request because it's not really something that we have a structure for. So I guess what I'm looking for is where everybody falls on that issue. And I'm, I think there's there are ways that we can make it work for both staff and the the folks who would want to have their wedding ceremony here at the library. But again, I don't want anything to do with receptions, absolutely zero.
Why not?
Yeah, I could could tell you why not, but I think you probably know.
I do know. And well, and I like the fee structure, frankly, because, you know, it it's a, it's a hefty amount.
Well, you're committed, yeah.
Yeah, it means, yeah, it's going to discourage people who are not really serious, right? It it accomplishes that for sure. So and if it's something, and again, it's something we can revisit down the road if we decide it's, you know, oh, it's been so much fun and fabulous, and let's try to do it for more people, which it's not going to be, but. Yeah. But I mean, the rest of the policy outside the wedding stuff, I thought it looked really good. And it's very, you know, it's very fair. It looks to me, you know, what's already happening, do we have, we have a meeting use policy currently, right?
We do.
I should know that, but I.
The major changes between that policy and this one are are really grouping changes. Brett and I both went through this policy and and kind of tried to group things a little bit more. Previously, it was basically a huge list of all the guidelines, and my brain can't comprehend that. I need sections. You know, what are we doing about reservations? What are we doing about room expectations? And so we went through and and divided it out that way. And then Brett had some really good suggestions on how we deal with just some of the, some of the process involved in meeting room reservations. So again, as Jenny mentioned, we're still figuring out the online portion. And and also right now with the survey being out and including in that included in that survey is a question about library operating hours. So there's a few things in here that as that data comes in, we may want to revisit this policy and make some changes or even delay the approval of this policy until April so that we have enough time to really look at what has come in from the survey and see if it's going to make changes that might impact this policy. So there there are a few things that I think are kind of a little bit up in the air at this at this moment, but it's a good structure from which to start.
Andrea, this is Andrew. I thought your willingness to to consider having events at the library, but not receptions was was really innovative and and very, you know, good looking at a way to generate some additional revenue for the library. So thank you for coming up with that idea. Going to the section care and use of facilities and the third bullet. And the only thing I would say is groups failing to clean up after their meetings. I would totally be comfortable if they not only lost their room privilege, but if they lost any funds as well or deposits. Because you don't clean, you don't get your money back.
Yeah, we don't, you don't do a refundable deposit for the rooms.
Okay, do we want to consider?
Then that, yeah, and then the room usage fee, so.
Do we want to consider a deposit or?
I don't know, Brett, do you have any thoughts on that? Do you do you mean a deposit for people who are planning to use the kitchenette in particular?
Well, the kitchenette or or that larger, you know, that larger room in the basement. Because it is such a large room.
Like some sort of cleaning fee that you'd have to, yeah, determine if they cleaned or not. Yeah, I don't know, the kitchenette.
Um, I feel like I don't feel like that's necessary at this point. It hasn't been a big problem. Of course, I mean, since we have had the use of the kitchenette, we haven't had access to the meeting rooms for so long. It's hard to say. But we do have the $15 nonrefundable booking fee that they would lose, of course. I I don't know. What do you think, Andrea? I feel like that's something that we could kind of alter if needed down the road.
Do I think refundable deposits are a little tricky from a bookkeeping standpoint?
Yes.
Because then it's like, do we just hold on to the checks and not cash them until we have to keep it? It just, it does create a little bit of a workload that I'm not sure outweighs the problem. Potential problem. If we are having a large problem, I would say absolutely. But like Brett said, it's just not really been a problem, and I kind of need to add that workload if it's not necessary.
Is is electronic payment an option for any of this?
It it is. I think what Brett and I talked about the other day is doing electronic, the electronic payment for the booking fees. And then payments for the actual hourly room fees onsite because a lot of people like to pay that when they actually come in to use the room.
Oh, for sure.
Okay, for Brett. So again, rather than having people pay a whole lot upfront that we then might have to refund if they cancel, we thought it might just be better because the booking fee, if you book a room and you pay the booking fee, it's gone. Even if you, you know, if you have to reschedule, we'll probably worry somebody about rescheduling. But if they cancel or they don't show, it's gone. They don't get it back. But those room use fees, of course, if somebody paid ahead and then they had some kind of, you know, life event where they needed to reschedule, we would want to work with them on that. And again, it's just kind of workload and trying to make it easy for Brett and Rick to handle all those funds.
Yeah, and the variety of payments and the methods of payments and the scheduling of payments on something like this, too. Yeah, so I would agree that not add something else to it. And yeah, if they leave a mess at the library, we'll let them know. We'll teach them a lesson.
Public shaming.
Yeah, like they use for blueberry. But as I said, overall, I think this is a really good starting point. And it does, for me, it was very, very clear. It was easy to read and I, you know, I I read it in as a, you know, community member who might want a meeting room. And I found it easy to understand and fair. So I thought it was, I thought it was good. Are there other questions or comments about the meeting room policy?
I thought it looked very clear, also. I like the, I didn't see the old one, but this is segmented up in blocks that make a lot of sense.
Yeah. All right, next up, we have the Carol Paul Trust Budget Amendment. May I have a motion?
Andrew, the Board of Trustees of the Peter White Library moves to approve the amended Carol Paul Trust Fund Budget as presented.
Do I have a second?
This is Patrick. I will second.
And discussion.
So this this amendment really just changes the investment fees that we had built into the budget. When when we were working on the budget originally, we weren't working with the full investment. Period. So it's a minor change and doesn't really impact the budget a whole lot. But we do need to make that change so that we aren't creating an, what's that called, Rick? An audit exemption or no exemption is not the right word.
Yeah, so we we could be.
We don't want to get a slap on the hand for this.
Yeah, and and basically what it amounts to is that number was 7,000. And now I've I've built more of a cushion and probably is for sure going to go over 7,000. Part of it was the fact that the balances increased on that fund nicely. So that's a positive. But I was working when I put this together and it only reflected three quarters of payments on it. So I didn't build enough of a cushion.
Are there questions or comments about this?
Rick, this is Steve. Rick, is that a, is that a fixed percentage of sort of the asset base or?
You're muted, Rick.
He's still making sense, though.
Okay. It's about. So we we've typically, last year, we were running with just over an 800,000 balance in that fund, which at somewhere between 4% and 5% is is where the 30,000 comes in at. So. But now we're over 900,000 on that. So where Andrea mentioned in her little comments on on this amendment that it maybe makes sense that we start to pull a little bit more out of the Carol Paul Trust going forward.
And and that fee is less than 1% of that's good. Usually it's 1%.
Yeah, it's 0.9 is what we have.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote to approve the amended Carol Paul Trust Budget. Andrew, how do you vote?
Aye.
Carol, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patrick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steve, how do you vote?
Aye.
This is Ann. I also vote aye. Motion passes 5-0. And next we have the Operating Budget Amendment. May I have a motion?
This is Patrick, so moved. Oh, sorry. Yes, so Patrick here. The Board of Trustees of the Peter White Public Library moves to approve the amended operating budget for fiscal year 2021 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Carol.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. And discussion.
So I did go through and make notes. Rick and I met one day a week ago. Been a week ago, yeah.
Yes.
And went through the budget line by line to look at what has happened this year so far and kind of get our collective thoughts on what it might look like by the end of the year. So we did go through line by line. And anything that had a significant change from what we originally proposed, I did make a note over to the side. A lot of them are pretty self-explanatory. You know, we're not collecting fees for most of this year, so that obviously is a reduction in in revenue. We also have had under the services line, a lot of, a lot of our services that generally we're we're generating revenues from have just not been offered this year. That includes things like passports and proctoring and just some of those service-based fees. And then a lot of the other revenue impact that's of significance is really related to the oh, the penal fines, I didn't make a note there, but essentially penal fines are just, they're just down. And we don't really have any control over that. That's based off of, you know, what kind of what kind of tickets are issued to especially large trucks. And with the less large trucks and large trucking running, our our revenue is impacted. It may bounce up a little bit. This number may not be as low as 60,000. By this time, it's all said and done, but we really have no way to estimate what what potential change might be there. So we we went conservative on that one. And a lot of this is just other little things. Obviously, we took the prime time out of the budget, both on revenue and expenditure side, since that program is not running this year. And the change to our estimated fund balance used did increase, but just by, I think it was 1,900 or right around in there. So not as much as we feared it might with some of the reductions in revenue. And like Rick had mentioned earlier, a lot of that is due to reductions and expenditures. So again, we went through line by line. Some of the expenditures did go up, some of them went down. This, you know, the budget's always a moving target, which is why we do an amendment part of the way through the year because halfway through the year, we have a much better idea what's going on in the current year than we do several months ahead of the start of the budget. So we did go through and make quite a few adjustments here, moved some things around in the collection lines. We are buying a little bit more digital resources than we are print right now. The the some increased money for canopy was needed. So Sam had requested that we move money from CDs, music CDs, into canopy to cover that cost. That is a bill by use cover our system. So that's why you can only check out so many canopy movies a month because that helps us keep our budget in control. And then another big one that we had to kind of figure out this this month or this with this amended budget is the make and take revenue or make and take expenditures. So that's the programming that you services is doing with a lot of their crafts and storytimes are make and take kits. And those kits are a little more costly to put together than normal storytime and programming because we cannot. Well, we could, but it's best to not assume that kids have things like scissors and glue and and basic supplies at home. So all of our make and take kits include everything the kid, the child would need to create the craft. So we are spending a little bit more on on those kits because they just are more costly to put together, and we need packaging to put them in. And it's just, it's what's happening in COVID all over. So we did do move some money around to make enough availability in the budget so that Sarah's got a little bit more money to play with for those make and take crafts.
And they're well worth it.
Oh, it's invaluable.
Loves them.
Yeah.
Huge fan.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it. I still have a cookie left from the last one.
Um, I also want to let you all know that we do have a couple HVAC and building issues coming up that we're going to deal with this year. We are going to replace the sprinkler system on the grounds this spring. The sprinkler system was installed in the year 2000, and we've had a lot of changes in placement of garden beds as well as just, you know, over the years, those lines get compromised. The different sprinkler heads are, you know, we had, we had a previous maintenance supervisor who liked to Band-Aid a lot of work. So there are some, some. So there are some, some pieces of the sprinkler system that don't function as well as they really should. And it, it's just time, 20 years is a long time for a sprinkler system on a, on a commercial property. So we're hoping to get that done early in the spring so that our garden ladies are super happy. We'd like to keep them happy and so that the grounds can be cared for appropriately. The other thing is related to the HVAC system and that is a controls issue that will help to control that, that demand fee. So it, Rick, feel free to jump in here if I don't say something correct. But essentially it helps if, if we're getting close to that demand fee, it starts to shut things down so that we don't ever trip over the line and start seeing that on our bill again. Because our bill is still going down miraculously.
Which is great news.
And that, that pretty much summarizes it. What's going to happen is yes, they'll be metering on our power coming into the building so that when it's demanding anything close to 200, it'll start limiting the chiller and limiting the air handlers. Primarily the chiller. And then there'll be some, some things that John and I have talked about with where we set building parameters also that'll, that'll help keep the demand charge down too. So with those two things, I, I'm pretty comfortable. That's why we were, I was good with dropping the, from 90,000 down to 80,000, so. Because, yeah, we need to make sure that we don't get back into the peak demand charge structure, so.
Right. Yeah, it looks good. Are there questions or comments?
This is Steve, is there, I was looking at the bottom of that, is there a net then? So we see what the original net was and then what the modified net is, or?
This is just a spreadsheet that we use for the budget. It's not an official balance sheet. Down here at the bottom, this revenues versus expenditures just shows that there's nothing, we're not in the red. Our, our revenues and expenditures do match. If they, if they didn't balance, then there would be a negative number here.
So that includes money taken from the fund to, to balance.
Yeah, on this, on this spreadsheet, this line here that says reserves, that's money that we've set aside to pay things like tax tribunals out of our expenditure. And then the same can be said up here at the top and the revenue line, the fund balance, that's where we're holding that money aside, as this is the amount that we might need to use from the fund balance this year.
Thanks, Andrea, appreciate it.
Yeah, for sure.
And, and Steve, the, the column to the left was the original budget. And then the, the one on the right is the, the revised, so you can see the comparisons.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Other questions or comments about the amended budget? Hearing none will vote for approval. I'll do a roll call vote, starting with Andrew.
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
This is Ann, I also vote aye. Motion passes five zero. And we're at public comment again. Does anybody want to talk to us? Apparently not.
Can't blame them.
Well, I, I figure silence signifies happiness, right? That's what I think. I didn't see anything listed under old business, does anybody have anything they want to bring up? Okay, hearing nothing, we'll move on to new business. Welcome, Steve, I mean, I feel like we have welcomed you, but.
Yeah, thank you.
Still there, Steve?
You're still here. Stick it up.
Steve.
Yeah. We're very happy to have you and look forward to working with you. And then the trustee manual, we, I asked you to look through chapter one, which is trustee rights and responsibilities. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I mean, really, the point of reviewing a chapter of the trustee manual every month is just to remind us, you know, best practices and things to keep in mind. If you have any questions or comments about it, happy to discuss it. Now, there is that checklist at the end, isn't there? Trying to remember what it says. I feel like we do know our library establishment law since we just put that into our policies. And the legal authority, you know, everybody attends meetings regularly. We have the ethics statement. Do we understand? The board's proper relationship to the director. Do we have a clear idea of our basic duties? I think we all, well, I don't think Steve's had his orientation yet, but I know it's going to come, I mean, he was appointed a week ago, so.
I think he spent plenty of time at that library as well. You will, they will show you that secret thing that you only get to see if you're a trustee, so.
Yeah.
I'm not allowed to talk about it.
But it's a really good thing.
It is pretty cool.
Other questions or comments or discussion about the trustee manual, chapter one?
No, Ann, thanks for bringing this back up, though. I, I know when we did it before, I found it very helpful, so thank you.
Oh, good. All right, we'll move on to standing reports, correspondence. There was one letter for your review in the packet.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great leather.
Thank you. And then are there any questions or comments about the standing reports?
For me.
Okay. Well, I mean, of course, you know, we all thank all the staff. You guys do a wonderful job and we appreciate all your hard work. I think it's part of what makes these meetings run smoothly. So if there's nothing else for the good and welfare, I think we can have a motion to adjourn.
I move, this is Carol, I moved that the board adjourned.
Do I have a second?
Second, this is Brett, I will second.
I was, I think Steve and Patrick both said they would second, so.
Steve, I'm secretary, so I won, I've got.
There you go.
I ordered the pen.
All right, a roll call vote on whether or not to adjourn. Andrew?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
This is Ann, I also vote aye. Meeting is adjourned at six, what is it, 43?
Thank you, everyone.